You think we have big time here?
Here we go.
There we go.
There we go. All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, October 11th. It's the monthly planning board meeting. If everybody could stand and sit and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, thank you very much. First item on our agenda is, oh, well, actually, sorry. I am reminded. We also want to, before we start, thank the crew members, Scott, Fuzee, Shelly, Pitts, and welcome a new Millis Cable staff member, Nick Maxwell, to the staff. They do the, all the setup for the cameras and make sure all you folks at home can see us and give you something good to fall asleep to. Anyhow, next on the agenda would be site plan approval application, public hearing continued from NextGrid Solar for 1073 Main Street. And David or Daniel was?
Daniel Cerber.
Okay, great.
We have to open the camera first.
I would open the public hearing first. Yeah, go ahead. Can you read the, thank?
Town in Millis offers the planning board notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 11 Mass. General Law, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Daniel Cerber, NextGrid, P.O. Box 7775, Number 73069, San Francisco, California, 94120, requesting site plan approval under Section 21, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation, and 13(c) of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Millis for proposed rooftop and canopy solar installations on existing buildings at property located at 1073 Main Street, Millis, M.A., M.A. 22 and 23, lots 10 and 89, property owned by A.C. Millis, LLC. A copy of the application and site plan is on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and on the planning board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
Thank you. And so, David, you're going to be?
Daniel.
Daniel. Yeah, right, the first time. Anyhow, okay, could you just do us a favor and just do the executive summary of what you're doing, just in case somebody's tuning in for the first time?
Absolutely. So again, my name is Daniel Cerber. I'm the Director of Development with NextGrid Inc. On behalf of ourselves and our partner, Hajar, Chuck Hajar, we're presenting this project for ground-mounted solar facilities. They're in the form of a carport over an existing paved surface at 1073 Main Street in Millis. This is a allowed use in this zone. I believe it's industrial B, the industrial B zone. The structures are all set back quite far from the street. I believe a few hundred feet to Millis, I'm sorry, Main Street. In between, there's a berm and there's trees. There's a complete wooded buffer around the vast majority of the site. The solar facility is, again, they're going to be on carports, which are, they have the clearance of a highway clearance, so 14 and 1/2 feet high. There's no moving parts. These are all fixed-tilt structures. All inverters are going to be way above everybody's head. And then there's a small gated ground-mount pad that has transformers, switch gears, and a battery storage, battery storage box. The site will be secured as it already is because there is onsite a marijuana grow facility, which has very strict access and fencing restrictions, and we do not need to really improve on those. So that's the executive summary. I can go right into what we talked about last week and the proposed changes, if you'd like.
Well, like, let me just, so what we did, we had our consultant look at it, and we came up with two things that, like you said, it's a, it's a perfect application for this. So there were two things that we wanted to look at. One was you're actually right next to a cemetery. So we did ask for, there is provision for screening, and we did down the street on another one, we actually had them put up fencing. We asked for screening to be put up, and because of the sidelines, it didn't make sense to have it on your property. It basically would be providing screening for the cemetery. It would be on-town property, is what we asked to have happen. In that way, the screening would actually be effective. And then the other thing was the decommissioning. In the, when it's all done, we wanted to have, and this is from our consultant, we wanted to have any of the normal hazardous stuff, or things that could go wrong, taken care of. And then the other thought was the panels themselves. The structures, whoever buys the property ends up with the structures, but the panels themselves, if they ended up being left behind, would offer an opportunity for someone to break them, since they are glass. And that was the, you know, our thought behind that would be, if they were abandoned, that would be the only request that we had on that. And beyond that, Melissa, that was pretty much it.
Those were the two items, yeah.
Yeah, two big items.
Yep.
And you guys did go ahead and say that you would, you know, go with our consultant's recommendation on that, on both of those items. So other than that, is there was anything else, Melissa, that I missed, or?
I don't think so, as long as, yeah, those were.
Did the board have a chance to take a peek at that? So basically, up in the cemetery, they're going to put up seven-foot fence and trees, because in 15 years, the fence will fall over. And the hope is that the trees would go up and, you know, block any sightline to the panels. And then the decommissioning, the decommissioning, so.
Yeah, the letter provided kind of outlining what the thought process or the idea of what the screening would look like came from kind of a combination of the Cemetery Committee, DPW, and one of our landscape architects.
Right.
And what they thought would work, work best. So it's a recommendation. It's not on a plan yet. So the condition right now that we drafted refers to a plan that should probably be presented and finalized, so that everyone's on the same page as far as coordinating with DPW on exactly where the fence goes, where the trees are.
So we could just do it as a condition? And then we could just have the final, basically, you do it. We would release this, and you would give us basically an as-built?
I believe the draft condition actually says that we'll go back and present a landscaping plan for approval before we pull the building permit, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
And that way, that keeps everything working.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, we want something installed, and then DPW to say, no, that's not what I was thinking, or something like that. So on both ends, it just kind of.
Yeah, the draft conditions were perfect and very clear, so.
Okay. And did you have any other comments? Were you good with everything?
Hundred percent. Looked just fine with us, yeah.
Good. Is there any comment from the audience? Nope, no, Scott? Okay. So, what about the board? Any comments from the board? I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And since we're here, we might as well vote on it. Let's see here. So I make a motion that we approve the site, special permit site plan application for 1073 Main Street, rooftop and canopy solar installation.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. All right. Thanks so much for coming in. Appreciate it. All right. Next item on our agenda, ooh, a little ahead.
It's done.
Oh, okay, good. We can, we can go. Good. 871 Main Street, Dunkin' Donuts, an update of traffic concerns and revised as-built. And Chris DeCosta from Dunkin' Donuts will be presenting that, so.
Hey, Dylan. My name is Chris DeCosta. Nice to meet you guys. I am the owner of the Dunkin' in town, as of, for a few months. I am not new to the business. The previous owner was my brother-in-law. So it was more of a reorg for us. Familiar, I'm very familiar with the site and its history and everything, you know, the backup on 109, which is obviously the issue, right, today. I did send some notes last week. Would you want me to go over those, or did you guys see those?
Which one, from the last meeting? We actually?
I'm sorry, from the last meeting, yes.
Yeah, the last meeting, we actually, I read them. We went through them.
Oh, okay.
And so, you know, our concern is, is that, you know, you put in the camera. You said you were going to monitor the, you know, the traffic going through. You put up the signs. I saw there was a sign there. Unfortunately, signs can't stop people from not thinking properly.
Sure.
And you also had the comment, which I hadn't actually thought of, was you were probably getting some increased volume from McDonald's. So, you know, one of the things that we don't, you know, we understand every once in a while, on a Saturday, at soccer time, when two games get out, we got it. You may be overwhelmed at that, you know. Those are things that are, you know, that stuff happens. It's, there's been more of a constant backup with cars either on 109, which is a real problem, or also in the sidewalk, which makes the pedestrians park around. So you had brought up the point of maybe larger orders, like when somebody goes in and orders 17 boxes of donuts and five boxes of Joe, which is, you know, I'm usually behind that guy when I'm trying to get a cup of coffee. You know, you could do something like that. But for our point is, you know, public safeties are number one. So that's something where, you know, we will, we'll probably have you come in again. We want to monitor it. We want to make sure that, you know, this is addressed, and we don't just kick the can down the road.
Sure.
So that would be one. And then the other thing is, since we had you here, the as-built that you gave us, it was basically your building plans that you gave us. The as-built doesn't give us the information that we needed on that. So Melissa can get in touch with you to tell you specifically what we're looking for on that. But the plans you gave us, unfortunately, wasn't what we're looking for. And that was supposed to be done from the previous owner, which didn't happen. And you are under a special permit. So it's not like we're going to forget that, you know, we need the as-built.
Sure.
That has to happen.
Sure.
And then there was also a fee, which has not been taken care of. And that would be also, we would have to have that happen.
Sure.
So those things, if you could make a list of those things, we'd like to have those, you know, worked on. And we understand you're taking over, and that's fine.
Yeah.
But we definitely have to, you know, we're trying to button up our loose ends here.
Sure. The fee has been sent? I don't, I don't.
As of today, I haven't seen it.
Okay. I will double-check. I put that out myself.
Oh.
I'll double-check that, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Yeah, yeah, sure. No, no problem. Same thing with the as-bills. If you guys, if this, that was, my brother-in-law kind of did that, handed it over.
Right.
And I grabbed it and gave it to you. So if there's something specific you're looking for?
Melissa can tell you, I mean, what we're looking for with the as-bills. And it's not, you know, it's not super extensive.
Sure.
There's just things we need to have, that we ask every applicant. It's not where, we're not singling you out. We ask everybody to do it.
Okay, sure.
So, that would be great.
If I could just, Melissa did send an email, and I did forward it to Chris. Did you receive the email? I forwarded it, made its review, and she sent us the sample of the as-bill that they were looking for, similar in type. Did you get that email, Chris?
I do not recall that one.
Okay. Because it mentioned the fee, if it was the.
I remember, yeah, I had, I remember, I'd sent, you'd sent something with the invoice that I'd sent. I don't remember it saying, like, it was something that I had to provide, something else.
Okay, well, we can resend that email.
Yeah, we can resend it.
So, like you said, it, you know, we just, we want to get it taken care of, and, you know.
I will say, you know, I will say with the store, done a lot of work, you know, kind of just looking at all of it. The McDonald's, in my opinion, is a big piece. You know, you can tell almost at the day. McDonald's is a strong brand, they're right down the street. And you can see it right away, the amount of cars we're getting in the added business. You know, certainly happy, you know, take the business. But, you know, it's our feeling, we've seen this movie before, you know, when McDonald's reopens, that kind of shifts back. That is, I don't want to use that as a crutch, but it is my belief that that was a, that was a.
And that's why we're saying.
Boom, right away.
We're, that's why we're saying we'd like to monitor.
Sure.
You know, and we're not saying, oh, my God, you know.
Sure.
What we're saying is, we identified this an issue. We're asking you to monitor it, and we'll also, you know, we drive by, and, you know, some of us are in town during the day.
Yep.
And we'll take a peek at it. And, you know, it, you know, if we don't address it and something happens, then shame on us. So that's why we're paying attention.
Understood. Yeah, I think the, from what I've seen, a lot of what happens inside the store has really improved, you know, for us, you know, new owner, kind of new, you know, faces and new changes, certainly with the new layout of the new store. We've shaved 30 seconds off. It's kind of like some things that Dunkin' measures in terms of, you know, performance, how fast you are. And, you know, since I've come in, we've shaved 30 seconds off, which for us is a big number. So I look at it like, hey, if that business stays, I want all of it go as fast as you can. Let's move, let's move the cars.
Expressive shots for everybody. First thing you want.
Yeah. Go ahead. So we are working towards those things. I do see, we put camera in to kind of get the crew to kind of understand, like, this is what we don't want to happen, and also for us to identify when. Is it like a pattern? Is it a certain time? I do find during the week, it's a bit more sporadic, you know. And it has improved. I feel like, you know, you're not often seeing, the weekends are a different animal. It is, like you said, it's a bit different, you know, a lot of big orders, and then it's, well, what's a big order and what's not a big order? And a lot of, like, again, all coming in at the same time. It is a bit, admittedly, a bit difficult. A different crew.
Well, and we, like I said, we understand, it's not a perfect world.
Yeah.
It just, you know, in general, if we can work on it, I think that's.
Understood. And it's, listen, we want it to be the exception, not the rule, you know. But we, I certainly believe it has improved. You certainly don't see multiple cars on the road. If it's a car there, again, it's, you know, we want none. But it is, it is faster, and it is happening less. That, for sure. So it is improving. But if, you know, I, you know, put on there the, we put the signs that you guys had mentioned. There is a tablet technology that Dunkin' is working on, that I'm sure you guys have seen at Chick-fil-A. It's not available yet, but I have inquired to them if that, if it is an application that could work here. I'm certainly open to that as well. So that is something we're watching.
Thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
If we could just, if you could do an update, you can just, you can email us the update of, you know, for next month, of just, you know, letting us know what you're, what you're seeing.
Absolutely.
And keep on holding that transformer from McDonald's hostage. That business will be nice and, nice and strong.
Absolutely. Thanks so much.
All right, great. Thank you. All right. Okay, next item is Form A application, approval not required, for 10 Acorn Street. And Dan American would be presenting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Try it first.
Good evening. This is an easy one. 10 Acorn Street is in the CB zone. It has about two acres of land. There's a, there's an old encroachment on the back of the property by the neighbor, Santos. So to remedy that problem, the applicant is proposing to parcel off, parcellay, and we'll be conveying that to the butter. Doesn't impact a lot at 10 Acorn. Has more than enough area, more than enough frontage.
Okay. All right, looks pretty straightforward to me. Any comment from the board? All right. I make a motion to, do we have to make a motion for this one?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the Form A application for 10 Acorn Street.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. And then Hickory Hills subdivision. So can you give us a status update on the punch list items?
Yeah. We're still working on updating our as-bill plans. We've done a bunch of field work. We had to locate some additional services. That's still underway. I should have that done in the next week or so. I believe all the drain lines have been videoed. I'm not sure if that's been submitted to Jim McKay yet, but that will be shortly. They're installing the sediment markers in the stormwater basin, so that should be done in the next week or so. So we're just kind of buttoning up all these loose ends.
Do you think when you get, since it's before town meeting, just so we could all feel comfortable, you'd be able to send us out a memo prior to town meeting, saying, you know, an email, saying, you know, we're all good, or we're all good minus one tie, because I couldn't get on the yard, because they had a dog, or, you know.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, you know, remember that you still have a bond.
Right.
And that, you know, the vote at town meeting doesn't perfect the process, right? The select board perfects the taking of the roads, so.
Right.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
I expect to have all that documentation to you in the next week or two. So which will be before town meeting, right? That's in November?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just, it'd be good. Then it'd be done, so.
Agreed.
Good. All right, great. I think that was it. So thank you for coming in.
Okay. Thank you.
If you guys would like to take a quick break and sign that plan for Dan, you can make that memo.
Sure.
And buy the copies.
Yep, we can do that. Melissa, I don't think we need you. Or do we for McDonald's? They're not going to be here, well.
Well, it's fine. I'm here.
Yeah, I know.
Always better than Melissa.
Yeah, I know.
Shouldn't drive all the way out here for 10 hours. Make it worth my drive. Exactly.
Perfect time. Your perfect timing.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, so. Next item on the agenda is 808 Main Street, McDonald's Restaurant. Daniel Allen from Bowler will be here. All right, if you just could get up to the podium for us, please.
Dan Allen with Bowler Engineering.
Yep, go ahead. Do we have to, not public hearing?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, so it's just the as-bill. Right, okay. All right, so you submitted the as-bill, and Melissa had it. And so actually, Melissa, why don't you just run through quickly on, there was one or two small items.
Sure. Yeah, no, the site looks pretty good. And as you know, they have the, they were granted the extension for the plantings.
Right.
So that'll have to be followed up on later. But the sewer line TV was provided to DPW. The couple of things that.
Sorry, I thought of one thing on that.
Yep.
On the, on the, that, so the, the sewer line has a sag in it. So is that, that's that public record? So if the owner of the plaza wanted to get it, they could find out where that low spot was? Because they, I know they, I know they know the length. When they put the, when they put the camera in, they know how far down the line it is? Because there's that sag where it goes down?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's public record, or if it could be provided to you, Camille, for the file, right now.
Could you do that, just, just to provide that, that, the camera?
Yep.
Because there's a sag in the pipe, and just if we had it, then if there was a problem in the plaza?
Yeah.
They would be able to find it?
Gotcha.
Just because it, we're doing it. You have it anyhow, and it doesn't cost anything.
Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, Melissa.
There was just a few things that I observed. One of them, I didn't see hoods in the catch basins on the site. The paint lines on one side of the east side of the parking lot, measured out to 18 instead of 21. There's plenty of room for it, but they just weren't painted long enough. I did find the water gate in the field, it just, the line on the plan.
On the as-bill, yeah.
Through it, yeah. Just a depiction there. And then I wanted to see if you could verify, as the, you know, site engineer, if the perforated pipe with the stone trench was put in per the as-built plan? Because that wasn't something that we were aware when it was being installed, to witness ourselves.
Okay.
So I don't know if that was, I saw the cleanout for one of them, and it's depicted on the plan, it's just a drain line. So if we could clarify that on the plan.
Yep. Yeah, I know that, yeah, that rear roof leader was the one that perforated. And then we had added the additional smaller ones for, like, the side canopies.
Mm-hmm.
But those were just regular pipes. But the rear one, yeah.
So one is, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, the plan doesn't differentiate that right now.
Gotcha, yeah, we can clarify that.
Okay. I think that'll help in the future for operation maintenance, and to know that you have infiltration on the site.
Mm-hmm.
There's a, this might have been an existing condition, but the hydrant right in front of the site was an existing hydrant, but it's only about six inches off the, off the ground.
Yeah, I had seen that, and I believe that was existing out there.
And Melissa, if they, if they just dug the dirt under around it, could they do that?
That's what I'm thinking. The landscaping isn't done yet, so.
Yep. You can see if they can.
I don't know if it's something that.
Yeah, 18, yeah, they need 18 inches for the final.
Right.
That would be good, if you could do that.
And that was it. Then just the plantings. I don't know if they're planting on, I know we're not planting until the spring, as far as the bushes and whatnot, but, you know, there's exposed soil on the site. So as far as what the condition of that is going to be through the winter or till spring.
Right. We were going to ask that question. Were you planning on, were you going to mulch it, and then rake it off? Chip it and rake it off, or hydro-seed it? If you hydro-seed it, then you have to deal with, you know, the grass.
Yeah.
We'd like, we would like something that, you want something to stabilize the soil.
Right.
Right, so.
We had mentioned that to McDonald's, and they'd be okay providing that.
Yeah, so if they want to.
Mulch it.
They can mulch it, they can wood chip it.
Yep.
Scrape it up, whatever. We just need something to stabilize the soil. They could paint it green. So, they've done that before, don't worry.
They're doing that one.
All right, good. Well, I think that was the only, only thing. Any comments from the, the board? And was there any updates? Since every time on Facebook, every day, people want to know when is McDonald's going to open. So it's not going to be us that's holding you up. So can you tell us about the transformer?
Yeah, so the transformer actually came in on Friday.
It did.
So they got the electric service. The only thing they're really waiting on now is just coordination with the gas line connection. In the, during the field, they ended up just cutting it at the valve, and they were going to connect it. So the demo service came out, they did that. demo service came out, they did that, but then the new service came out and they're like, oh, we can't connect to this, we need to go all the way back to the main, which the utility company said, hey, you have to submit a new demo request and this would add like months onto the schedule, so they're looking to coordinate, there's actually a gas main on the budding property, so they're looking to coordinate, or they're currently coordinating with the budding property owner and gas service company to come in, uh, with, on that gas main.
Okay, so it's not the, it's not the Millis Planning Board, it's the gas company, it's over there.
Yes.
That's what we wanna hear, okay, good.
Yep, and then, yeah, just gonna mention, the GC actually went out today and installed the, um, hoods and they painted those transition curves yellow, um, they'll be coming out tomorrow to do the, uh, striping on that, um, drop, those parking spaces.
Good. Um, so, let's see, oh, we're doing this, so we can approve the as, how do you wanna do that, Melissa, what makes sense to approve the as-built, uh, planning your final review?
Um, yeah, I think that, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Um, it sounds like most of the work, work was done and it's just a couple of plan updates.
Yep.
At this point.
And mulch.
And mulch.
Yeah, which you guys probably would've done anyhow, so, all right, um, let's see, I make a motion that we approve the as-built for McDonald's with, uh, with, uh, Melissa's final review.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Great, awesome.
Good, thanks again.
All right, appreciate it, guys, and now we got this in. I cried the last second.
You gotta, yeah, you gotta get it and you gotta keep us, uh, up to speed of when it's gonna open, so we'll get it out there.
I will, I guess now right away, I wanna cut that update.
Richard is self-help meal.
Hey, I usually end up, sometimes I swing in before the meeting to get it so I can eat something, cause you don't wanna see me angry. Angry, uh, let's see, other business, Regency at Glen Ellen, emergency access road discussions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, um, there were some, uh, there were some concerns up at Glen Ellen, um, for, there was an access road that was for emergency only, and, uh, I actually went down there and took a look and met with the site supervisor over there, um, basically they have, um, Jersey barriers in front of it and the road is going to be used only for emergency access. Uh, they set it up with, um, it, FlexPave is what it's called, so basically it's, it's a product that they put down a normal road, uh, base, um, product, they put the FlexPave on the top of it, they put lawn on top of that and then they grow grass, but if you need to, you could drive a truck over it so it doesn't sink down and disappear into the lawn. Um, that'll be the final result on it, um, there is, so it'll be mowed, it'll look like a lawn, um, pedestrians can walk up and down it, cause we can't stop pedestrians from walking and if someone wants to walk up and down this meadow to go from one spot to the other, I, you know, so be it, um, and it'll be no vehicular traffic unless somebody goes, basically drives through the lawn, so it's not like it's gonna be open and cars can drive up and down, it, it's gonna be a lawn space and if they see people driving down the lawn, I would say that might raise some red flags and, you know, they probably would stop that, so, um, it may look like a road right now, but in the final, um, you know, when it's all done, it will not be a road. Glen Ellen did say that if it became an issue where people were driving over the lawn, um, they would put a gate up.
I thought that was something they were supposed to do anyway.
I don't...
And that emergency vehicles would have access to the gate.
Was to, we'll have to check on that, yeah, but they said if, if it came down to it, they put a gate up, so we could look back into that and see if, uh, but it really, I mean, it's not gonna, it's not a road, so you'll have to drive up over the curb.
To even get on.
Yeah, you'll have to drive down over the lawn, um, but...
That's the same thing to take away that, I mean, don't, most of those emergency access still have, they still have the gate at the end of it, don't they?
You wouldn't, no, you wouldn't need to, the, well, actually, that's a good question, what would be, no, because the other, no, that's a gravel road up at, um, a, uh, what's the one?
Maybe you're mixing Acorn, yep.
Yeah, Acorn, that is a gravel road, so that makes sense that they would have a, this is gonna be a lawn, um, so, uh, you know, it, the discussion's not closed because obviously the project's still ongoing, but, you know, the way I look at it is, it's a lawn, if you got somebody hitting, is driving over and they're doing a lawn job, you know, they probably do it a couple of times and so the, the homeowners association will probably figure out who it was and get the police down there, so...
So the concern might be about, cause phase three is under construction for a while, contractors don't use it.
Right, and that's...
Right, because it has to be open, he, uh, I think Ted said that they're coming for a bond request in November because they are, they sold their first house, they're looking for their first occupancy permit in phase three.
Mm-hmm.
And there was a condition that the emergency access had to be up usable, finished in order to get that first occupancy.
Okay.
Because they need emergency access if somebody's living back there.
So would it make sense to have a temporary gate then, maybe, I mean, would that be a...
It, it might, I mean, I, unless they, you know, police their contractors well.
You can't trust those contractors as far as you...
If you're, if you gotta go all the way around the site to bring whatever you're bringing.
Yeah.
Versus going down this path.
Yeah.
It's gonna be tempting.
And you don't wanna maintain it just by Jersey barriers because you don't want the fire trucks.
Yeah, you can't have, you can't...
No, no, you can't do it, right, they can't do it with that, so, all right, so does it make sense to ask them to put a temporary gate in, maybe, until the construction's done?
It might.
Okay, well, I mean, that makes sense, so, all right, so, we can, uh, do you wanna send a memo to them and ask them if they could put up a temporary gate with, and it'll have to be, obviously, the...
We could even make that part of our, cause Ted requested that we do a bond for phase three, and we could roll it into that.
Do you wanna discuss, uh, cause he had scheduled for November meeting, do you wanna just discuss it then, or do you wanna get something in place beforehand?
Yeah, let's get it ahead of time, you know, it gives them, if we can ask them, I mean, if they, they said they're willing to do it, so let's, you know, let's get it done ahead of time, that way when they're ready to, you know, when they need it, it won't be last, plus it's gonna be November, so if you have to, it's starting to get cold, it would probably be better to get it out of the way sooner than later. So, see, it was a good discussion, we brought up a point we hadn't thought of, see?
Good thing I stayed.
Yeah, thank you to whoever brought that up, it, it brought up something we hadn't fully thought through. Uh, I did talk to the manager up at Glen Ellen about the mowing, um, cause that hadn't been done yet, so they're, they're aware of that, they're going to, uh, make sure that it happens by November first, so we can follow up with them now that we're, to get in contact with the people, uh, and we also talked to them a little bit about the snow removal, um, because when we had a big storm, the snow removal process started at eleven with every single piece of equipment and the front end loader driving over the cobble strip every half hour or so, and it went through the morning, so we tried to see if they could work on, uh, working on, uh, maintaining proper snow clearing and being more neighborly, and, uh, so they said they were gonna see what they could do about that.
I would think the homeowners would want something.
They put all the equipment, all the equipment is over near the clubhouse, so basically it's not near, it's not near necessarily Glen Ellen, it's near the neighborhood, um, so the, next time we do a large subdivision, we should make sure that we, uh, we figure out a way to make sure that if there is gonna be any, cause they stage it, so they actually have trailers with salt and sand, um, staged along with all of the vehicles, which they fuel and they stockpile snow in that parking lot, so there's basically activity from whenever they start to whenever they finish, and I get it, they get a clear of the snow, but I, I asked if there could be something where they, they started at, you know, three or four in the morning versus eleven to, you know, when I, what, si- you know, six, you know, so, they're gonna, they're gonna take that under advisement. So that was that, um, okay, uh, did anyone else have anything before I hit the meeting minutes? Oh, I have, oh, sorry, one last thing, I had the monthly report, actually, sorry, I'll do that quickly. Um, and then I think that's it, Melissa, for you, so you can, if you wanna skedaddle, so...
Okay.
Um, uh, this is the monthly update from the, um, Economic Development and Planning Director of things that are going on in the town, um, so Anthology at Millis, which is the Dover Road Assisted Living, uh, they're on the tail end of that project and they anticipate, um, being, they wanna try to go for occupancy in the late fall, um, so that's where that's at, so we'll actually, that was good because then that'll actually go on the books and we'll start to get, um, tax revenue from that. Uh, Regency at Glen Ellen, they're gonna go into phase three, which is the final phase, uh, right now there's two, approximately two hundred and thirty-three units that have been, um, built and those are on the tax rolls for Millis, so that's gonna help, be helping us, um, uh, in six one seven cannabis, um, manufacturing at ten seventy-three Main Street, uh, they're closing in on the final, um, phase, uh, phase one, they, uh, are doing an odor and noise study, um, which is part of the last part of, uh, getting that thing built out, so that's getting closer, and we just approved a, the solar for basically the solar farm on top of it and behind it, which is off of the, um, you know, it's, it's well off of the Main Street and it's in a great spot, um, so that'll mean that we'll be generating more solar power, uh, for, uh, the, I think we, there's a collective or something that Millis had that we're, we, you could actually buy into if you were interested in, um, in doing that. GTA, GTE LLC fourteen eighty Main Street, that's another, uh, growing facility, um, they are looking to start, uh, you know, some, uh, some of the construction on that, they're waiting for Board of Health to order operations permit, so. Um, one fourteen Union Street, which is the old Herman Shoe building, uh, that thing, they did another, they knocked it down and then they found there was PFAS, which is , uh, the forever chemical in the ground, um, they did a second round of testing in the public right away, so that's still, uh, still on hold. Woodlands Cottage of Tresca, uh, basically nothing has happened, um, other than the Select Board did approve their water and sewer application, subject to peer approval, and the developer's agreement to reconstruct it over a road pump station as part of their, um, agreement to be able to build up there. Uh, two thirty-two to two forty-eight Main Street, forty-eight units of affordable housing, uh, forty B project, that's the one up on, uh, the top of the hill over near Larch Road, uh, the water and sewer has been connected to the town, a permit's been issued for foundation work only, no building permit issued yet. Seven Water Street DPW building, uh, generator was ordered, um, it's on back order for fourteen months, so we'll be seeing that in, uh, next year sometime. Three seventy-six Sparhawk Academy, it's all done, we accepted the, we accepted the as-built plans, so they're off the books. Thirteen forty-four Main Street Cobble Knoll Estates, um, originally designed as twenty-five units of single-family duplexes, uh, five units to be affordable, um, that one is increased, the developer asked the Select Board to increase the project from twenty-five units to twenty-eight with seven affordable units. The water main for Main Street has been brought into the project, um, so there's another one, uh, that is going in. Emerson Place, um, two building permits have been issued, water and sewer pressure testing is completed and there was a structure that they had, uh, to get built, uh, for the culvert, uh, they had reviewed that and got that information back to them. One's eleven seventy-eight Main Street Ham Lane, uh, water and sewer extension permit was, application granted for seventeen units of residential development at the Select Board's six twenty-eight hearing, um, and that was quite a while ago, I don't think anything has happened with that. McDonald's Restaurant, we just, uh, finished off the as-built review, so we're doing a couple of punchless items, and getting gas, they're good to go. Ten sixty Main Street forty B, so that would be, um, Badabing's Plaza, so in that, that land was sold, uh, forty B, uh, application went in for a, um, for a, let's see, it doesn't tell me how many units, I think it was twenty-eight units if I remember correctly, cause I read it today, um, and it would be, uh, that is a forty B, um, application, so they had three above ground and one, one below grade, so it's a three-story high, it looks like two with a mansard roof, so it, you know, in the, in the elevations it looks, it doesn't actually bet, and it had commercial also in that, uh, so it's the mixed use. That one has gone to, that has to go to the state, uh, we can put in comments for that, usually with the, our only comments would be, uh, parking or access, um, we also can put in, um, you know, comments if, you know, for, uh, any design to be looked at, but the state or the, uh, has the oversight on that, so...
I think we should look into that because there, the design on that email today didn't indicate, or at least I couldn't blow enough to, up, far enough to indicate there's a driveway on Plain and a driveway on Main Street, and are they gonna allow westbound turning left, cause it's maybe that entrance that's on Main Street, there's maybe two car lengths from the lights at Plain, and that's gonna, that's gonna just cause a, and it's right at that top of the, the crest of that hill.
Okay, well, I mean, it's a, yeah.
So, I think that, I mean, if they're going to...
Well, we could put in comments, I mean, we could put in...
Yeah, I think we wanna, we wanna try to see if we can get a copy of those plans that would, uh, I mean, maybe it was one-way, maybe it's only exiting, or maybe it's...
No, it was both ways, I looked at it, and so I could blow it up.
Cause I could, I couldn't get it.
Yeah, I, I would manage to blow it up, in the parking lot on the upper side that goes on to Main Street was shown, if I remember correctly, as a two-way.
Okay.
So that, that might be a con, I mean, cause that does make sense, so you don't wanna bung up that, if they came onto Plain, if you could go in from Main, that's fine, but if you went...
I think, yeah, I'd like to see access only be from the eastbound side, cause I don't wanna see someone coming out, blocking the eastbound lane to take a left onto westbound, or someone that's heading west stopping, and I just think, especially with the lights there, you're gonna have...
Well, no, and the other thing is, in general, with one oh nine, as busy as it is, I think the, you know, at, at, at some point in time, it would be nice if, um, the powers that be think out the commuter, so, you know, I, I, you know, delaying people on an already backed-up road and Metro West was actually in the paper for having the worst commute in Massachusetts, um, so it came up as number one, the average commute for Metro West is an hour, um, and, you know, personally myself, I, you know, I can't take the train to go into Boston or whatever, cause I need to bring my tools, and, so, you know, any, anything that would slow me down going in, um, you know, traffic calming measures and all these other wonderful things that they're putting in, for me to go into Boston to work on people's houses, um, you know, I think would be good if we could pay attention to make sure that we're not impacting the commute if it's just a simple thing as changing an arrow to a, one way to the other.
Cause I don't wanna see somebody coming out on Main Street...
No, it makes sense.
...to take a left, blocking the eastbound traffic and because there's a light, two, two car lengths, maybe two car lengths, now you're gonna, it's...
All right, well, anyhow, that would be something where we can, we should, we can get together and I, I'm not sure of the, the timing for getting our letter in.
Maybe it was like November twenty, it was sometime in November, but I can double-check.
All right, so whether, I mean, so this, when's our next meeting in November, do you remember? Okay, so we would have time, so...
Well, do we submit the comments to the state?
They go to the Select Board.
Okay, yeah.
They're solicited from the Select Board at this point.
Okay.
And then when they file with the ZDA, then it gets distributed again to all the town boards for color.
Okay.
All right, so we should make, you guys should take a look at those plans and put anything you, you know, together, we can compile it together and, at our next meeting, and submit it to, you know...
Send a memo to the Select Board.
Right, and, you know, because like the one over at, um, the old Herman Shoe, they had a significant number of, um, of units, but they didn't have enough parking, and, you know, that, one of the comments was that, yeah, okay, so maybe if the developer did it where we could do angled parking on Curved Street or, or something of that sort, so, because, you know, the cars will be there, it's, no, they're not gonna disappear, so ignoring the fact that they're gonna be there is just gonna, know that there's a problem that's gonna come, and then when it shows up, we won't be surprised, but the problem will still be there, so... All right, and moving on, uh, PFAS Treatment Plant, the Mass D P grant for a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars was awarded for the design project, final course, cost will be five point six million, funding is complete, the new building construction is at twenty-seven percent, so it's a little over quarter-built. Lansing Millis Building, sixty-four Exchange Street, um, feasibility study was, uh, was complete on the building, it needs stabilization repairs, estimated at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and will require approximately one point five million dollars in renovations, a preliminary application was made, the state economic development bond for, uh, bill for four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for building stabilization, so basically they want, you know, um, we wanna make it waterproof and keep the raccoons out of it, so that's the goal, and now to maintain it as...
What is it used for?
Well, it used to be the town hall, it's, it's a historical building, the problem...
It used to be a train station.
Right, that's the default, but I'm just curious if the town has ever contemplated future use.
They, we, well, we did, the problem is, cause I'm, I was, I'm also in the permanent building committee, um, the problem with the buildings is if you put a certain amount into it, then you have to bring it up to code.
Right.
So, it's either we spend four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to maintain it, um, and basically then we can figure out what we wanna do with it, or we have to spend one point five million and we don't necessarily have a tenant for it or a use for it.
There was, there was a, uh, school was renting it up until a couple of years ago.
Right.
Um, the Montessori School on Philip Street was using that, the downstairs.
Right, so the hope was, is, is, you know, by stabilizing it, we could stabilize it.
Sort of attract.
It doesn't, it doesn't fall down.
Yeah.
It would be a shame, it is Lansing, it was built for Lansing Millis, you know, and the stones, there's a whole history to it, the stones were brought in from, people donated the stones and, you know, it would be, it would be a shame to lose a important piece of history, um, and unfortunately, um, because everything is, has to be done through the bid process and prevailing wage, um, you know, the, the price to do the stabilization, uh, is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so that's...
It's currently a very popular, it houses a very popular community for raccoons.
Yeah, yes. Um, and then the last item is the, uh, town, town center planning initiative, that is the MBTA rezoning, um, and so with that one, the, um, because we're considered an MBTA community, we have to, um, figure out a zoning area for seven hundred and fifty units of housing, we don't have to build them, we have to make sure that there, uh, there are areas, um, to build seven hundred and fifty units of housing, there can't be any restrictions on it, so, um, they can do multi-family, they can do multi-story, um, and we have to figure, there's a specific requirement of acreage, uh, that has to be met, um, and so they're putting a committee together to try to figure out how that would work in Millis, and then it will come to the town and we could vote on it, um, the way that the state has done it is that they'll, they have, they have some funding that will be linked to this, so new funding for programs, but they also said there may be cuts from existing funding if it's not approved, um, so as I said on the meeting, it's not a carrot and a stick, it's a stick and a stick, so... So, you know, we still will have to vote on it in the town when it comes up and the committee's gonna try to figure out how we make that work. And that was it for the update.
Actually, to that point-
Yes.
Chair, the planning board is, the Select Board is still accepting volunteer forms for anyone that is willing to or interested in being part of that committee. Their next week's meeting, they will be reviewing those forms and trying to choose this, the nine, hopefully, there'll be nine volunteers at least.
Alright, good.
Mr. Chair, one question.
Go ahead.
Do we know what, do we know, we know anything about the business that's proposing to open where the Millis used auto parts used to be? There's a big sign up-
Yeah, no, I saw that, actually, I drove by.
American backyard or something like that.
Yeah, American backyard. I didn't, I don't know if they have to, I mean, it's just a new tenant. I don't know if they have to do anything. I don't think they do. It's not like it's, it's an existing space, they're just basically changing tenants. I would imagine if they had assigned, they went through the building department to get a sign permit. But I, I don't think necessarily they have to come in for, although the scrapyard did come in.
Well, they sometimes do a site plan, a waiver of site plan review, just so you know it's coming to town. I haven't seen, nothing's been filed with us yet.
If they have to, if they apply for anything, usually Mike-
Right.
G M Petro will, will send them over and say, hey, listen, you know, you need to go to the planning board and at least, you know, see if we need a site plan review or a waiver of. But, yeah, I did see that and, you know, I don't, I mean, I, I haven't looked at what they did and peeked in, but-
Fireplaces, patio furniture, things like that.
Okay. Alright, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from our last meeting on September thirteenth, as written.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, great. And-
Could we just, we have our November fifteenth meeting. Would you mind scheduling December and January if possible, just so we can let the table know?
Yup. Alright, December.
I have November fifteenth.
I'm gonna make sure I have that.
I have.
Yup.
So, we could do December sixth or thirteenth.
It's up to you guys. Anyone?
It's all good with me.
Well, usually, I can tell you right now, we're gonna pick a date and it's gonna be my company Christmas party.
On a Tuesday?
On a Tuesday. Every year, yes.
He deliberately doesn't know.
No, they haven't told me yet. No, I'll know, I'll know two weeks before it happens.
When do you want your Christmas party?
No, December thirteenth.
I think the thirteenth is a four weeks, which is always kinda nice.
Okay, let's do thirteenth. You good? Alright.
December thirteenth.
Then we should take, we should take, we should take bets on if I find out if the Christmas party is that day.
Does anybody know his boss's number?
I don't know if he wants us to have that information.
Alright, good.
And then January.
And then January tenth.
You want your January? Okay, sorry.
Can we have last for January?
Oh, she did.
I'm wide open for January too.
Yeah, whatever you want. I mean, what do you guys want? Tenth, seventeenth?
Well, again, the seventeenth is, well, it's five month, five weeks.
How about January tenth?
Tenth, done. Okay.
We can always change that if we need to, like in November, so we can change it to January tenth for like-
So, if you're not having your Christmas party on the thirteenth, I think the planning board should have a little Christmas. Before, after. Have a snooze fest.
Alright, with all that being said, if less there's anything else, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, great. Thank you, guys.
Before you go, I just need you to sign for the decision.
Yup.
Perfect.